Always forget the count. Please stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. I'll now call the roll. Council Naomi Zabat?
Present.
Council Judith Garcia?
Present.
Council Todd Taylor?
Here.
Council Giovanni Recupro? Council Leo Robinson?
Here.
Council Calvin Brown?
Here.
Council Damali Vito? Council Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Here.
Council Mia Rodriguez?
Here.
Council Roya Vigilante here. Council Daniel Lopez?
Here.
Chen present, one absent. At this time, I'm going to ask during the memorial and celebratory resolutions that we stand up once again in memory of, I'll allow Council Robinson to make his announcements about today's date.
I would like to ask everyone present to stand in a moment of silence for all the young men and women whose lives were taken away on December 7th, 1941 at Pearl Harbor. They never had a chance to live out their lives, but their lives as well as the others who gave their lives in the fight for freedom will always be remembered and never forgotten.
Council Brown?
Charlie Lanzello, Charlie Lanzello was a big part of that, of dropping an atomic bomb to help end a war war II. So I'd like to say hello to Charlie Lanzello today. And thank you.
We'll now move on to the public speaking portion of our meeting. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak to this body, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll now move on to the next part of our meeting, the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion? Council Brown asks that we accept and file under suspension. The next portion of our meeting is a communication. We have a communication from city manager in regards to the report on park construction expenditures. Dear councilors, in response to your request, I have enclosed a report outlining the city's major investments in parks and playgrounds over the past decade. Each project has a breakdown of total costs, funding sources, and a brief description of the work. Based upon the comments from the city council at its November 16, 2020 meeting, we are planning to prioritize Quigley Park and Boston Park for future investment. What is the wish of the council? Council Recupro?
To adopt?
Under suspension?
Yes, and like to speak on it if it's possible?
You may, you have the floor, sir.
This city manager is doing the best that he can for all of us. And you can see by this report right here in this park. If you look inside of this report in this park, Quigley Park was done in 2014 and it had only $200,000 spent on this park. Which, as you look at all the rest of this here, which I have a list right here of all the parks included, all of them are 900, 800, 700. This is a heavily used park by a lot of children in a congested area. But yet, no money was spent on it from the prior administration in 2014. There was no money spent on this park. And last week, that last meeting when I said, this was because it was predominantly Hispanic. Here's the proof, predominantly. Why was that the only park in the whole city, in the whole city, there had no money spent on it? Which there's parks in here which were done two, three times over. So what was the idea of it? Because nobody stood up and said, why are you doing this? You should have had the park the same as the rest of them. The money comes from the state to refurbish these parks. And that park, if I read to you what it says here, they didn't do anything to this park. The only thing they did to it is they put, ah, new walls. And that happened when I complained, the little kids were falling off. They didn't ref- done nothing at all. They spent, out of all the parks in our city, even a dog park, a dog park. So here, here's something that's strange. A dog park is worth more than human park. A dog park was spent $279,868. Here's a human park. Quigley Park, FY14, 200,000. So what are you saying? That people around that area weren't worth nothing? That a dog park is worth more than them? So now I commend the city manager for putting this forth where he makes Quigley Park a priority. Because Quigley Park is a priority. It's used by a lot of young children in that area. It's very, it's the only park within that area that's restricted. Where you, anybody can go and all the children use it, and it's next to the school. So they use it. Why shouldn't that park have the same as everywhere else in the city's parks? Why? That shows me, not this administration, but the prior administration that was here, had no respect for the people that lived in that area. Because if you have respect for the people that live in that area, you will treat them as equal, not as worse people that... Because the people there are just as good as anybody in the city. Were just as good as us hard, hard-working people. And they deserve to have a park like everywhere else. They don't deserve to have a park that spends no money and a dog park is worth more than them. That's a disgraceful thing to actually say that a, a park for dogs. I love dogs, I have so many. But human beings are human beings. They should have maybe a little more respect and be treated maybe a little better. By you doing that, you're showing that, what are you? Why I, so it's got nothing to do with Mr. Ambrosino, the administration that's here. It had to do with the prior administration. And whatever they did, they didn't think very highly of the people of my district. Because if they did, they would have gave them a park equal to the rest, which it did deserve. Thank you.
Seeing no other councilors with their hands raised, I'll move on to the next communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to the Federal Cares Re-reversment Act. Last month, the city made, received from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue its second round of funding from the Federal Cares Act. The total amount delivered to the city was $4,292,61, which includes an additional $3 million above our initial announcement as promised by Governor Baker. As was true in the first round, this ru- this money is intended as a grant, which must be accepted by the city council. The money will be utilized by the city to cover all of the costs incurred since July 1, 2020, in addressing both food insecurity and housing insecurity in the city. Including but not limited to certain of the costs of the Chelsea Legal Clinic, our second round of rental assistance, our daily food pantries, and our Chelsea Eats Food Debit Card Program. A draft order to accept this grant is attached. What is the wish of the committee? Counsel? Council Robinson asks that we accept and file under suspensions. See no objection? Moving on to the next communication from the city manager in regards to approval of donation of PPE from Maskon Medical. Dear councilors, pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Chapter 53, A and a half, I am writing to request that the city council formally approve the donation of PPE supplies to the city of Chelsea by Maskon Medical of Woburn, Massachusetts. A copy of the letter from CEO John R. Chen is attached. Last week, Maskon donated to the city an enormous amount of masks, gowns, hand wipes, and other cleaning supplies. We will be distributing these materials to residents and nonprofits over the course of the next few months. What is the wish of the council?
On the new business?
Council Robinson asks that it be accepted under suspension. See no objection that motion carries. However, communication received from the city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to the proposed municipal harbor plan. Dear councilors, I am writing to request the adoption of the new housing, I'm sorry. Along last, we proposed a municipal harbor plan and a DPA master plan. That includes provisions requested by the city and has the coastal zone management's initial approval. A copy of the plan is attached. As you will see, the plan is quite lengthy and in many cases quite technical and detailed. If finally approved by the Commonwealth, the plan will not only act as a guide for decision-making by the city, but it also will create policy for state agency actions. The plan has some specific benefits to the city, its residents, businesses, and landowners along the waterfront. The plan improves predictability and decision-making by modifying certain state Chapter 91 standards to meet local planning objectives. Specifically, Chelsea's plan provides the need, needed flexibility in locating and developing commercial and supporting industrial uses in the designated port area, mitigating flood inundation pathways, and improving public access. It helps to realize economic benefits by creating clear guidelines on land use standards, policies, and trends which may lead to increased investments and job density along the waterfront. Creates social benefits by providing a framework for securing increased public access to the waterfront and funds to support public investments and waterfront improvements. The plan will allow for the placement of public access boardwalks all over the water sheet where it will not impact maritime activity. At this point, I am not requesting, nor is it required, that the city council express any approval of the plan. Instead, what is needed from the council at this time is simply authorization for the city to submit the plan to the Commonwealth for the commencement of the final regulatory review process. That process involves a required public notice period and a public hearing where members of the public, including the city council, can weigh in with comments and concerns. Eventually, it will be for the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs to issue a final approval of the plan that meets the regulatory requirements, taking into account the comments received in following consultation with the city and the harbor planning group. Finally, you should note that the zoning changes necessary to implement this plan previously submitted to the council are an integral part of the process. The council adaptation, adoption rather, of such zoning changes is likely to be an express condition of the secretary's approval. For the council's convenience, I have attached a draft order that will allow the municipal harbor plan to be forwarded to the secretary. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
Council Robinson asks that it be adopted under suspension. Is there any questions? Council Recupro?
Accept and file under suspension.
So I'm sorry, accepted and filed.
And there'll be something coming up on the new business?
And there'll be something coming up on the new business. You may ask a question.
There's a que- there's a part of this thing here that I want to make sure that I understand correctly. An owner means any person or entity that holds title to one or more dwelling units in any manner, including but not limited to the partnership, corporation, or trust. For purpose of this ordinance, the term owner should include one who manages. So you mean to say that a guy that doesn't own the building can tell you to leave?
Sorry, I think you're on the wrong, you're on the wrong, um, communication.
Because I, I don't get this part. Should include one who manages.
Council Recupro, you're on the wrong communication. We're on the waterfront municipal harbor plan, not on the housing stability portion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's coming up next. Yep, that's fine.
Can I ask a question on that?
On the municipal harbor plan? Okay, you have a question on that?
On the harbor plan, Mr. Tom, is it?
Through the chair.
What does this do? Does this make the beginning of the harbor? Are you trying to change the beginning of the harbor the same as you did on the other renders the harbor? Huh, to the chair? Okay, so does this mean that we, we're sending a petition to the state for them to change the, the plan of the way the harbor is now?
Earlier, the city manager had presented to this council several changes in the waterfront zone. The designated port area, upland, and also along the marginal street corridor. That has all been submitted to us. We had a subcommittee meeting on that. And that is going to be a hearing by the planning board on the 7/15. At that point, the water harbor plan, the, the zoning changes that was alluded in this communication is going to be back to us to vote on at the end of January, possibly beginning of February. There is a waterfront plan in front of you that accompanies which will go to the state. In order for the process to go forward, this is going to the state and they themselves will be having, the State Agency of Energy and Affairs will be having a public speaking portion open for this, this community, including the council. So there are two concurrent processes going in place, both local and at state level. This simply allows the council will vote to proceed and give that plan to the state so they can begin it.
Do they have an input, more or less?
Correct.
Because the final decision is up to the state.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. And, thank you.
Next communication is a communication in regards to the report on the 2020 census activities. Dear councilors, enclosed for your information and for review is a brief report on the city's 2020 census efforts. Unfortunately, due mainly to the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic, our outreach efforts were substantially constan- constrained. As a result, the self-response rate in Chelsea was less than hoped for and worse than in 2010. Many dense urban areas around us experienced the same problem. State-level census data is expected to be released by the Census Bureau by early 2021. We should have municipal-level data sometime in the spring. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objections.
The communication was asked to be adopted under suspension. Council Recupro?
So by what this, from what I'm reading to this, right? Did our census lower? They didn't have, according to this, we didn't get the same amount of people, so? That, that, that our census is lower than 2010?
The self-response rate, the number of individuals that responded on their own, was lower than in 2010. That is correct.
So in other words, all the people that, they still have time to respond?
Nope, that window has closed.
So in other words, our population is less than estimated in 2010?
We don't know that yet because we don't know, that was just the self-reporting data. That was not the data collected by the staff who had been doing the 2020 doorknocking.
Thank you.
Communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to an update on hiring for diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. Dear councilors, in response to your requests, here is a brief update on the hiring of the diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. The city has advertised a DEI position. We believe that the job posting currently has broad circulation. We have already received many resumes. The deadline for application is Friday, December 18, 2020. Once the application deadline closes, the city will review all the applications and identify those that meet the minimum qualifications for the position. I will then appoint an interview committee to evaluate these qualified applicants for the purpose of determining candidates it wishes to interview. I anticipate that the interview committee will consist of residents, members of my administration, and elected officials. I will ask that the interview committee identify two to three finalists for my final consideration. I will then conduct final interviews and make a decision on hiring. Given the timing, initial interviews will probably take place in early January. I hope to be able to make a final decision on a candidate in late January, early February. Council Robinson?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. And can we go back to the housing stabilization ordinance?
We did not go over that yet.
Right. That was in letter D.
Correct. I am writing to request the adoption of the new housing stability ordinance, a measure that will provide tenants and former homeowners who are facing eviction with necessary housing resources. As you know, over the last month, the expiration of the state's eviction moratorium has led to an increase in evictions. Even as the impacts of COVID-19 persist, in response to the Department of Housing and Community Development has convened an eviction task force to respond to evictions and develop tools to serve residents. One tool that other communities have enacted to address evictions and foreclosures is a housing stability ordinance. A proposed draft is attached. If adopted, the ordinance would work as follows. When a property owner begins the eviction process, a notice to quit is issued to the tenant or former homeowner. The notice to quit spells the timeframe for which a tenant or former homeowner has to pay the rent owed or move out of the dwelling before the eviction has, is started in the court system. Because notices to quit are not actually filed in court as part of the eviction case, they are notoriously hard to track. Often, this prevents municipal and nonprofit agencies from providing needed services to the affected residents. However, under the proposed ordinance, when a property owner issues a notice to quit or other notices ending in Tennessee, the property owner would be required to issue a copy of the notice to quit to the Department of Housing and Community Development. At the same time, the property owner would be required to provide a tenant or former homeowner with the Housing Rights and Resources Guide. The purpose of the guide is to raise awareness of the rights possessed by tenants and former homeowners, as well as various organizations that offer legal aid, housing counseling, rental assistance, and other resources. Compliance with this notice would be enforced by the Inspection Service Department and Chelsea Police Department. In line with other local housing regulations, the ordinance proposes a fine for non-compliance. Eviction notices would be maintained in a database of eviction activity monitored by the Housing and Department, my Ho- I'm sorry, Department of Housing and Community Development. As eviction notices are submitted, the Department of Housing and Community Development and community-based partners will coordinate the necessary housing resources for the tenants or former homeowners in conjunction with the Law Department, Inspection Services, and my office. Given the critical nature of this eviction crisis, I strongly adopt, support the adoption of the housing stability ordinance. Although this imposes an extra step for on property owners seeking evictions, it comes at no additional cost and with technology can be completely qu- completed rather quickly. Accordingly, I respectfully request your approval. What is the wish of the council? Would you like to accept and file the communication?
Accept and file a communication, move it to a conference?
The order on the, the new, there's a new business and that order will then be, in conjunction with the order, will be filed. Okay. Next order, next item on the agenda, item H. Communication received from Tom Ambrosino in regards to the council order requesting a $1,000 tax reduction. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to a request that I consider reducing property taxes by $1,000 for any owner-occupant having difficulty paying the property tax bill. Although I am empathetic with the plight of homeowners facing with rising property taxes in the midst of the existing economic hardships caused by COVID, I do feel this specific approach is unwise. First, $1,000 per owner is a very large and expensive sum. With 2,878 owner-occupants, the cost of granting this full benefit to the entire group is almost $2.9 million. Further, the average tax increase for owners occupants in FY21 is just not that exorbitant. Although a no- small number of owner-occupants, depending on evaluations, will face an increase of $1,000 plus, the, the majority of owner-occupants will have an increase far more modest. As an alternative to this approach, I prefer my existing recommendation for assisting owner-occupants. Under the proposal now pending before the council, $750,000 would be added to the homeowners stabilization program to assist homeowners struggling to meet any bills, not just property bills due to COVID-19 pandemic. The proposal also contains an income limit, currently proposed at 100% of the area median income. That is $119,000 annually for a family of four. To ensure that relief is provided to the most vulnerable of the COVID-19 impacts, if some qualified occupancy adversely impacted by COVID-19 were facing a $1,000-plus property increase, this program would provide assistance. In sum, I believe my proposal provides more targeted and efficient relief than the council motion. What is the wish of the council? Council Recupro?
Accept and file the communication?
Okay.
And I like, can I speak on it?
You may.
I see what the city manager is, is, is saying here. There's so many homes. Then he says here, it'll, it'll be a, a, a small majority, a small, a s- number of owner-occupant dependent on the valuation will face an increase of $1,000. Most of the homes in this city that are two and three families will see an increase between 1,500 or 2,200. That's what they're going to see. Because the valuation went up a lot higher than, than it was now. So, and then down here, I can, I see the other one where he wants to put the 750 will be added to homeowners stabilization program. Now, who determines how this is going to be done by affected by COVID-19 and which way? We were all affected by COVID-19. Everybody that's here is affected by COVID-19. So in other words, anybody will qualify as long as they make 119,000 annually, a family of four. Is that how it would work? That's all you would have to prove that you are affected, that you make 119,000 and you can't pay? So you would come and you would apply for the 750,000 and you would get some type of relief? Because from what I understand in this part here, the part that says a million, a 2.8, 2.9 million would have been too much. Okay, so you've got 2,800 homes, 2,878 that are homeowner-occupied. That includes condos, everything, everybody that lives here, right? But now you want to turn around and take almost a million dollars and give it, which is the same thing that you're doing but in a different way. So how do you determine on this specific thing here? It does not say how much money you're going to give each individual homeowner that comes up to you. So how are you going to determine who gets what? So if you've got a single-family home and you need help, what you're going to get? $100? If you've got a three-family home, what you're going to get? $1,000? If you've got a two-family home, what you're going to get? $500? It doesn't specifically say here what anybody would get. It, it just says 119,000 annually for a family of four. So how do you determine who gets this money? And how much money do they actually going to get? So you said it would have cost us 2.9 million. Okay. Okay, it's, all right, but right now, when the new taxes come out, people, open up your wallets, because if you own a two-family home, your minimum is going to be 1,500. And that's a minimum. And if you own a three-family home, your minimum is going to be almost $2,000. So, that's almost twice as much as it says here. It's not a small minority, because the majority of the homes here that are being affected is two and three families. There's only 900-some-odd, single-family homes and some, maybe, I can't give you the exact figures because I don't have them in front of me, but I know that the two and three families are going to be affected heavy, real heavy. And that, by doing that, is the tenants, the poor tenants that are living in these units are the ones that are going to pay, because landlords are going to pass it on to you, the poor tenant. So, the tenant is the one that's going to pay the bulk of this. And by the 750,000, and I understand you're trying to help, but how are you going to help? Who are you going to give it to? In this particular thing, it does not say who gets it and how you're going to disburse the money. So, that's what I would like to see. If we're going to approve the 750,000, because I could, maybe I get your point, you don't want to spend 2.9 million, maybe we don't have it, who knows? But you want to do the same thing in a smaller version. And the only difference is, in the other version, is that it doesn't specifically, it doesn't say every homeowner, every homeowner gets it, but it goes according to 119,000 and each homeowner won't get $1,000. I don't think each one that has it will get that much out of it, because you only got 750,000. So, how are you going to do it? You're going to turn around and say, a single-family gets this, a condo gets this, a three-family gets this, a two-family gets this, and a four-family gets it. So, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see a breakdown of it, exactly how it's going to work if we approve such a measure. Thank you.
Moving on to the next communication. We have a communication for the city council from the city manager on the ZBA. I am writing in response to the request that I consider changing the administrative code to allow for a ZBA associate member to take part in all votes. Unfortunately, the state law does not authorize the city to make such a change. Please note that the comparison, composition, rather, of the city zoning board of appeals is governed initially by state law. That law, MGL, Chapter 40A, subsection 12, provides that a zoning board of appeals can have no more than five members. That is the maximum voting membership. The city of Chelsea has the maximum five members on its ZBA. That same state law allows for associate members of the ZBA if that is provided in the local ordinance or bylaw. A zoning ordinance does indeed allow for associate members. See Chapter 34, Section 34, Section 213A. But as expressly provided by state law, that associate member can only take part in board decisions in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member or in the event of a vacancy on the board. MGL, Chapter 40A, subsection 12. The law does not allow the associate to vote in any other circumstances, and in no cases may more than five persons vote on any matter pending before the zoning board. For these reasons, the city cannot provide the ZBA associate members to vote in all cases. Counsel Garcia?
Yes, I make a motion to accept and file a communication, and I wish to briefly speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you, counselor. So, thank you, Tom, for really taking the time to respond to this. I will make sure to relay the message to the constituent who expressed this concern. And basically what I'm hearing is that it's due to the Massachusetts general law, so I appreciate it.
Moving on to the next section of our meeting, we're moving on to second readings. Order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to the appropriation of $750,000 to the Housing and Community Development Redevelopment Fund to assist owner occupants of residential property who have been impacted financially by COVID-19. Counsel Robinson? Counsel Robinson is asking for a roll call vote on the $750,000 transfer of free cash to the Housing Stabilization Fund to assist homeowners in COVID-19-related items.
I'd like to send it to committee, because it doesn't say here how much they're going to get. It doesn't specifically, it just says $750,000. It doesn't specifically say who's going to get the money, how they're going to do it. It just says we appropriated money for, what are we appropriating it for? We appropriated for homeowners, but it doesn't say which homeowners are going to get this money. I want the homeowners to get it, but I also would like to have a list to show me exactly how they're going to determine, a one, a condo, a two, a three, a four, how they're going to disburse the money? How's this money going to be divided? Is it just going to be one sum for all, and as long as you make under the 100% of the 119,000 that you're supposed to make? So, it's going to be the same equal amount of money to everybody? If you're going to do that, I'm in favor of it. But if you're going to do it differently, that each one gets different, then we should talk about it and see how they determine who gets it. But if you're going to give one amount for everybody, fine, go for it. I'll go for it right now. So, how is this going to be, city man, Mr. Aberzino?
Any questions, any questions can be directed towards me.
I'll ask you, Mr. Roy.
I will remind, there's a motion right now that we send this to subcommittee. I will remind my colleagues on the vote to the subcommittee, we did have during the last week's assessments, assessors' meeting on the setting of the tax rate, I invited Alex Train specifically during that one and a half hour meeting to ask if there were any questions about the $750,000. Questions were asked at that time relative to this. I will be voting against sending this once again to subcommittee. I think it's imperative that we move on and send this money to the board. However, if my colleagues feel differently and want to support Recupro's request that we have another meeting on the $750,000, it's up to them, but I will call a roll call on whether or not we are sending this to subcommittee on conference. Counsel Naomi Zabat?
No.
Counsel Judith Garcia? Counsel Todd Taylor? Counsel Giovanni Recupro?
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
No.
Counsel Calvin Brown?
No.
Counsel Demoli Vito? Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez? Counsel Roya Viganeda votes no. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
No.
That motion does not pass. We will now be voting on the, whether or not to approve the $750,000 to the stabilization fund. Motion set forward by Counsel Robinson. A yes vote would be supporting that. Counsel Naomi Zabat?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro?
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yeah.
Counsel Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Demoli Vito? Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Viganeda votes yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
We have 10 in favor, none against, one absent. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have new business. We have a order introduced by Counsel Recupro in regards to the city manager to provide the city council an update about the streetlights that have been fixed in the city and which we're putting to the max setting. Counsel Recupro?
I'd like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing none, you have the floor.
We, a lot of parts of our city is dark and some are not. So, and a lot of parts of our city still have lights, they stay on all day. And I would just like to know, how many did we fix? We have a company that does that. A city itself doesn't do it. I think we hire a company that goes around and determines who does this. So, it has nothing to do with the employees of the city, or it has to do with the company that we hire. So, this company should furnish us at least which part of our city are broken and which part of the lights are not working and which parts are brought up. I think all councilors deserve to know if any lights in their district are being fixed. Do they routinely go around and check these lights, or is that up to the city councilors to go around and to determine if their lights are broken? Because I've done it many times and I've called it in. I've got to get the pole number and send it in. So, is it the city councilor's job to go around and look all over if the lights are there? Or is it the company that we hire? They should at least say to all of us, hey, you've got a few poles in your area that are out and they should be taken care of. That's all I'm asking is, for years, we've been doing the same thing. Who's in charge of these lights? We have a company that does it. So, the company should tell all of us, to each individual councilor, the councils at large, the majority of the lights in this section is broken. Can you please, we fixed them for you. Oh, whatever it is, they should be, at least let us know what lights are broken, what are not. Is it, is it up to us or the people that live there? A lot of people that live there do call up EPW and give them the pole number, but then it takes forever to fix. A lot of times, one of the things that people tell me is, oh, we've got nothing to do with it. It's EverSource that has to do with it. But we have a company that maintains them. So, I don't understand why we have a company that maintains something, but yet, when people call up for the lights, one of the things they tell them, well, we can't do it, it's EverSource, it's got to do with the lights. So, that's what I would like to know. Who really takes care of those lights? Do we take care of it, or does EverSource? And which lights are put up to the brightest and which are not? Because a lot of parts of the city, the lights are not the same as other places. That's what I would like to know. If it's possible, the city manager can send us something, all of us to tell us how this operation works. That way, we won't have to put in no more orders to understand how it works. We specifically have it, this is how it works and this is how it runs. And if the people ask and they call up, I will tell them, listen, the city has nothing to do with it, it's got to do with EverSource, because that's what they seem to be getting. A lot of people call and they tell them, EverSource is the one. That's what I want to know, if EverSource takes care of the lights, or we have a contract that it takes care of the lights? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an order introduced by Counsel Viganeda in regards to holding a subcommittee on conference to discuss the organizational meeting for the next 2021 city council year. Counsel Robinson?
Suspension, if there are no objections?
I'd accept and file the order under suspension. It's not a communication. Accept and, ask for adoption under suspension of the order. Seeing no objection, that motion is passed or adopted under suspension. Next order on the agenda, order that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss Roca's request to brief the city council. Counsel Robinson?
I'd have the order under suspension, if no objections.
Seeing no objection, that motion is passed. We have a next order introduced by Counsel Viganeda regarding accepting the gift of PPE supplies from Mascon Medical of Woburn, Massachusetts. Pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, the city council accepts the gift of PPE supplies from Mascon Medical of Woburn, Massachusetts. Counsel Robinson?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the acceptance, if there are no objections.
We'll now have a roll call vote on the exception, adoption, rather, of the acceptance of the gift of PPE supplies from Mascon Medical. Counsel Naomi Zabat?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Demoli Vito?
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Viganeda votes yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
We have 10 in favor. I called you, Recupro. Sorry. I put you as a yes. Should I change? Next order on the agenda is that pursuant to 301 CMR 23A, at all, the city council hereby authorizes the city manager to designate a planning representative and to take any and all necessary steps for the purpose of submitting to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs the proposed municipal harbor plan for public comment, a public hearing, and final determination by the secretary.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption?
Counsel Robinson asks that a roll call vote be held on the submission of a designation of a planning representative for the waterfront plan. Counsel Naomi Zabat?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro? Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Demoli Vito?
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Viganeda votes yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
10 in favor, none against, one absent. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an order introduced by Counsel Robinson that the city council hereby accepts the grant award from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue in the amount of $4,29,261 for the COVID-19-related expenditures, and allows for the city auditor to post these funds to the general ledger consistent with guidance from the Mass DOR Division of Local Services. Counsel Robinson?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call vote for the adoption of the grant from the DOR of the state, from DOR, $4,29,261. Counsel Naomi Zabat?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro?
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Demoli Vito? Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Viganeda votes yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
10 in favor, none against, one absent. Motion carries. We have an order introduced by Counsel Viganeda in regards to the Housing Stability Ordinance.
I'd ask to waive the reading. We had it up front, and I'd ask to move it to a conference under suspension, if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asks that we waive the reading and that we move, adopt, move to a second reading and that we send this to conference. If there's no objection, seeing none. We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regard, oh, sorry, we've already done that. So, that concludes the rest of the meeting. We have the public announcements. Are there any councilors who have any public announcements? Counsel, I see Counsel Zabat with her hand up. You have the floor, counselor.
Thank you. I would just like to mention that the Jewish holiday of Hanukkah begins on the evening of Thursday, December 10. We can't have our usual get-togethers in person, so there is a beautiful display, the Salvation Army of menorahs. That's on Broadway, 456 Broadway. And there's also a talk that will be given online on Zoom by Ellen Robner at 4:00 PM on December 16th about Hanukkah. And check out the Walnut Street Synagogue and Jewish Arts, most in Facebook pages, more information. And anybody who celebrates that, Happy Hanukkah, Ragsameah.
Any other councilors with any announcements? Counsel Brown?
And I just want to let folks know that the Salvation Army is still looking for toys and also for kettle bell ringers. You can contact the Salvation Army, they'll be glad to hear from you, glad to help receive your support. Also, the city of Chelsea employees are doing their toy drive. That drive is going on up until December 14th, so you can drop them off at three locations. You can drop them off here at Chelsea City Hall, Chelsea Police Station, Chelsea Senior Center. And if you can't get to one of those places and you really want to help out, you can call me and I'll come by and I'll pick it up, a toy. My number is 617-466-1548. And again, on December 11th, the Salvation Army is having their toy drive at their location on Chelsea- at their location on Chestnut Tree. Thank you.
I saw that Counselor Garcia had her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just a brief announcement, there is a charter review happening. And our last meeting for this year is December 16. We will be meeting again in January. But given this year, our last meeting this year in this month will be December 16. We'll be reviewing Section 4 and 5 in our next meeting. So, the public is welcome to come and either be a part of the public speaking portion or send an email to Batzima Melara at F-M-E-L-A-R-A at chelseama.gov. Or you can send me an email at judithgarcia@chelseama.gov.
Council Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to announce that the chairwoman, Kathy Garcia, myself, and La Plata Diva are collaborating to do a holiday toy drive as well. We are accepting toy donations now until the 22nd of December. We have a gift wrapped in the 22nd of December and the toy giveaway would be the 23rd.
Council Todd Taylor?
Hi, for anyone that's, that did not tune in for our subcommittee meeting at 6 o'clock, there is a proposed zoning change along the Route 16 corridor in Prattville. So, I encourage anyone concerned about this issue to please attend the planning board meeting on December 15. You will need to contact John DePriest in the planning department in order to get an email invitation to the Zoom planning board meeting. But it, you know, especially if you live in the vicinity of Garfield, Sagamore, Clyde Street, any of the, any of the streets near there, you know, I would invite you to contact John DePriest and attend the planning board meeting on December 15. Any other concerned citizens, please feel free to contact me as always on my cell at 617-872-3174. Or you can email me at toddtaylor@chelseama.gov.
Okay. Any other councilors with any other announcements? Seeing none, thank you very much, everyone. That concludes our meeting.